All right, everybody. Sorry for the little delay there. We're usually very punctual here on this board. We had some technical difficulties. So we are ready to start here tonight. So I thank everybody for coming down. We will start off tonight just with a recognition of our superintendent, Adam Steele, is on a medical leave of absence for the next month or so. So we wish him the best of luck as he gets better and hopefully can come back to the district in the middle of March. In the meantime, we are happy to say that Steve Chamberlain has been appointed acting interim both. I don't know what you, uh, acting superintendent, uh, he's one of our assistant superintendents. So Steve will be manning the ship with Christine, certainly providing capable hands as well. And they'll be tag teaming things until Adam comes back better and fitter than ever in about a month and a half or so. So we're looking forward to working with Steve and we have every faith as a board that things will just continue to go status quo for the district. As we go through the next five weeks, uh, you got lucky. One of your weeks is vacation week. So that's good, right? Um, so with that, I just want to recognize that, um, we do have a group of youngsters here tonight that are here for a special presentation with the fax program at Amherst Middle School. So I will turn it over to them for a presentation tonight as, uh, they visit the board. And we're fortunate, we've been able to do this quite a few months this year and we hope that it continues.
The mic press.
Yep, right in front of you there, the microphone, just hit that red button.
No, the part closest to you, there's a push button.
Why do I get that wrong every time?
Every time.
Hi, my name is Holly Bordenberg and I am the family and consumer science teacher at the Amherst Middle School. And these are some of my awesome students. Um, we are here to talk to you. Oh, first I have to tell you that I'm celebrating my 10th year as a teacher at the middle school. And before, I know, that's pretty impressive. Uh, before I came to teach, um, family consumer science, I was a food editor at a magazine, uh, in New York City. And I tell you that only because I've always loved cooking and recipes and teaching cooking. So, uh, as a teacher, I love that part of my job that I actually get to teach, um, these very important life skills to my students. So we are here today to talk to you about one of the aspects of, uh, what we do in fax, which is a part of the seventh and eighth grade curriculum because we're doing cool electives this year. And we, we play this game called the grocery game. Uh, but before we play the grocery game, a part of my curriculum is that we, uh, I challenge my students to come up with a menu project that they can be very proud of. Uh, they develop three recipes. They choose three recipes they don't develop done. Um, it's nutritionally balanced. They make a grocery list. They go shopping with their grown up and then they cook this meal. So this is all part of what leads us to the grocery game. So I have a very short video for you all to look at and then my students will share some of their takeaways. So one of the fun things about this, um, this project that my seventh and eighth grade students are, um, involved in is that I ask all of the students that come through my classroom to make a donation to the grocery game. And I say someday fifth grader, you will be in seventh and eighth grade, you will get to play this game. So, so thankful that we live in such a generous community because we've never had a shortage of cash in order to play the grocery game. So this past time that we did it on literally the coldest day of the year, right? January 15th, it was like negative five, 35 students came to play the grocery game. I had 10 teams and, uh, is that right? 10 teams, 17, 35, 17. Yeah, yeah. And each team had a hundred dollars. And that's how we play the game. And the idea is that I say to them, buy as much nutritious food as you can buy. Have to buy at least 12 fruits and vegetables or more, uh, only four packages of ramen. Can't buy a hundred dollars worth of ramen and the team that buys the most food wins the game. Um, another element was, uh, random acts of kindness. So maybe you guys could talk about that. All right, who's going first?
So my name is, uh, Carpenter Barry. I am a seventh grade student that's taking, that took facts this year and did grocery game. So I, um, during, uh, fax, during the menu project, I made a duck confit risotto, which isn't the most common meal. So I learned a lot of different things about cooking, which helped pick out the options that are easiest to cook and cheapest for my, for, um, at home and like throughout my life to make different foods and through the, and to do the grocery game. And that's why the game and project in fax helped us through like at home and drive. Uh, my favorite part about the games was, um, was being a friend and getting to help people at the same time. Doing them also helped me to learn how to put together a fair priced, healthy meal. And that's why the grocery game was helpful for me to learn about shopping and cooking.
Um, hi, my name is Keenan and I chose to do the grocery games because when my sister was in eighth grade, she got to do the grocery games and I got to come with her. So when I learned that we were going to do the grocery games, I jumped to the opportunity. And I learned that buying the most expensive food isn't always the best option because when you're trying to buy the most food for charity, then like, then you're not like going like get as much if you try to buy the most expensive things. Also, I like to go she gains because you get to try to buy the most food and then you get to give back to your community.
Uh, my name is Lily Kuzma and I decided to do the grocery games because I had nothing to do and I was super bored. And I also really like to run around a supermarket, looking at different things. Uh, some challenges we faced were pushing grocery carts. How do you do it? You've got this thing, you've got people coming at you like, I'm sorry, like I didn't mean to do that. And it was very difficult. Um, a few other things we faced, we, we kept losing each other in the grocery store as well. Um, so we would like, be like, all right, I'm gonna go get this. Two of us would go off and then the other two would be free to do whatever. So I'd come back and there'd be so much, I'm like, what happened? They're like, oh, we just got some stuff. I'm like, okay. So we had to like go through like the manual checkout things. I have no idea what we would have done without those. But I'm really glad I did this because I learned a lot about like working with other people. And I also learned about, um, how if it says three for five dollars, you'll have to get three of them. You can just get like one and then divide it by five or something like that, I think it was. And yeah. I really enjoyed it.
Yeah, um, yeah. Hello, I'm Erin Coleman. I love fax and other academics. I also love winning. The first time, the first thing I did in preparation for the grocery game was memorize and map out the market basket. I was ready and excited because I was ready to win. When we got there, I could not wait. And I was, and when it started, the adrenaline rushed my toes. Upon finishing and arriving at the, at the shed, I was surprised to see how many groceries we got. And the doughnuts were a win too. I thank on behalf of my team, Mrs. V for giving us this ability and taking us out. And our parents.
Doesn't even have any questions for us.
I have many questions. I think if you did duck confit and you tried to play in the grocery games, you could not have won, I guess. Duck is expensive.
It wasn't that expensive. It was like.
You have to tell me where you buy it because every time I go to buy it, it's crazy expensive.
That is a big lie. You just hold. That is the big lie.
That crosses me off, so.
So I think the duck was your home assignment where you had to do the three recipes.
Yeah.
Whereas your recipe that you used for the other thing had to have been there.
Yeah.
Anybody else have questions or comments? Victoria?
Um, sorry, Terry. You could, um, I, well, that was a little louder than I expected. Um, I am just really thrilled to hear the connection between the curriculum and the student experience. Um, I think it's fantastic. We always talk about what the students are getting out of, you know, everything that we do every day. Um, and to know that it's an elective that you guys are choosing and to see value in it is great. Thank you.
Sorry. No, front button, Terry.
Okay, thank you. I always get those goofy speaker. Um, so now that y'all actually have gone and helped, you help your parents a little bit more, like in the kitchen or when they go shopping? Now that they know you are capable of these things.
Um, maybe. Get out of it. After doing like the menu project and like doing facts, like learning how to like cook more. And then like you're able to like know more and like help it up more out because you know, like more, more of a like measurements or stuff you have to do like to follow a recipe and help make something at home.
I mean, honestly, at this point, the market basket, even though their, their arrangement doesn't make any sense sometimes. Like it, sometimes it just, it, it just doesn't make sense. At this point, I basically, I've gotten it down. I know where things are. And so if, if someone in my family is going to the market basket, I can be like, okay, I'll go with you. I can help you out.
There you go.
Um, sometimes though, sometimes it doesn't make sense. Like I said, I, I don't get it, but you know, the, the grocery store.
It could be confusing. It's true. It's true. I love the pregame though. You strategize.
Ready. I was ready. I was not losing. And it was good because we got second place. So.
But everyone's a winner because you got to help charity and you know, it's all good.
One of the parts of, uh, my challenge to these, uh, students this year was random acts of kindness. And because they, they're literally like running through the grocery store on a Saturday morning. And, um, one of the teams, I don't think it was your team, but one of the team had a member of the community come up to them and say, what are you doing? And they were able to explain it. And, um, that patron marched right up to the checkout at Market Basket and bought a $100 gift card and donated it to us to give to Cher, which was like so cute, you know? And just today I went down to my mailbox. Well, actually I went to pick up the popcorn from the school board. Thank you so much. And there was a thank you letter from Cher for, um, the donation of $700 of groceries and the $100 gift card. So.
It did have something. And it wasn't as much like we had some kind of that store. So when we were going, we had like been going on like, oh, we were just kind of like going around with the car trying to find stuff. And she came up, like came up to us and just asked like, are you, what are you guys doing this for? And we like explained how like we're doing for our school and like going to charity. And she thought it was interesting. So we made like an impact like teaching other people about like making, doing kindness to like help other people with like, moving money. And, uh, the random act of kindness, it doesn't really have to be pushing an old lady over and then. No.
No.
It could be just like, oh, it's like there's, you can see sometimes I actually saw someone, they were like muddy under the breath, like, oh, like they were, I think they were looking for rice flour maybe. They were on the phone. It seemed like someone, they were having a bad day. And I'm like, rice flour is right there. And they're like, oh my God, thanks so much. And it's just like the little things. Doesn't have to be helping someone out or like doing something super big, like paying for someone's grocery. It can just be something super.
Nice work, guys. And now I hope you realize all those times you complained about mom and dad's meals and you cried because you didn't want to eat them. Now you have a new respect for how frustrating that is, right? Is that what we take out of this?
That's all we took out of it.
Thank you, guys. There we go. So I appreciate everybody coming down for that. Uh, while they, uh, get ready to pack up, you guys are more than welcome to stay. I will open it up for public comment. If we have any public comments tonight regarding anything, whether it's fax or something else, please come forward now. But I don't see anybody. It looks like our audience is leaving for the night as well. So it would be a streaming only audience for the remainder of the night. So with that, I will move on to the next item on our agenda and that will be our consent agenda. I'll take a motion to pass the consent agenda as written. I have a motion for Ms. Kuzma. Can I get a second? Ms. Parisi, any discussion? Uh, before we get into that, I will make a comment that we want to thank Gescu Studios and then Hannaford Helps for about $3,700 in, uh, unexpected revenue. So those will be put towards the programs at the Clark and Wilkins Schools. Uh, and before we open it up for broad comments on the, uh, consent agenda, we'll start off with the Wilkins principals. If anybody has any comments for them first or anything out of their report. Beth?
Um, before we get there, I actually have a question about the, um, unanticipated revenue for the photography. Is, does anyone know if that's higher than usual? Cause I know we switched companies this year. I think they're a little.
The battery issue because it's flashing on and off.
Yeah, that's okay.
Thank you.
Um. Um, so my question was, is, does, do either of you remember the unanticipated revenue from the photography in the past? Cause I know we switched companies. So I wasn't sure if this was higher than usual or.
I don't.
Okay.
And then last year.
Yeah, last year. Yeah. I'm gonna break this one. Um, I, I'll let somebody else go about questions for the, uh, Clark Wilkins before.
It's like you were looking over knowing that I was gonna have some questions. Um, so I'm gonna start off with the first page, current enrollment. Um, we had talked, I believe we had talked earlier in the year saying that the August number was kind of inflated versus where we really were in September is, is our, our real start to the year. Um, so with that being said, we're showing about 13 and almost all of them are in pre K and K. Okay. How are those grades doing with that influx?
So preschool enrollment is a little tricky because some of our preschool children join when they turn three. So some of these students turned three over the course of, you know, the beginning of the year till now. So they wouldn't begin until that third birthday. So that's a, a good chunk of those, uh, students there. And then we did have some families move in and certain grades had more than others. We had some families, um, you know, maybe start a homeschool and then come back in. Um, you know, as, as the year went on, um, right now we feel like we're doing fine with our class sizes and, and where we are, uh, with those enrollments.
Sorry.
Turn your microphone over.
Thanks. Um, about our college students who are coming in, about the, the St. and some college students who are going to be teaching. Sure. I'd be happy to talk about that. Um, really exciting opportunity for us. We've started a partnership with St. Anselm, um, and we have five student teachers. They're full-time student teachers. So they're here five days a week for 15 weeks, um, in a dedicated classroom. They're all senior elementary ed students. So they're in their final semester this year. Um, prior to that, they all did a bridge experience in the fall where they were with, uh, their cooperating teacher, uh, for at least 20 hours. But two of them actually did a full internship experience of 110 hours. So many of them have been with their classes for the year. Um, we've got them in five different classrooms, wonderful clinical educators. So Ms. Snyder, um, Ms. Boothroyd, Ms. Merle, Ms. Eccleston and Ms. Smith are all hosting student teachers. Um, it's, it's really exciting. They're very eager to be in the field. They're volunteering everywhere within the building and, um, having a great experience, asking lots of questions, jumping right in. Um, so it's been a real nice connection for us. Uh, St. A's has asked us to host again. Um, next year they're getting positive feedback from the students on our school and district as a learning opportunity for students. So we will have another five in the fall who will do their bridge experience, um, this spring. Uh, you know, a little benefit to us. We have some extra hands, um, in the school of really eager educators and also kind of first dibs when, and if there are openings in the future, we've gotten an opportunity to see some of these individuals, individuals teach too. Yeah, it's, it's such an important thing. I know that, um, where my daughter went to school, we chose her school in Vermont because she got to be in a classroom every semester from her, her freshman year and didn't have to wait. And it was such an amazing opportunity to go, oh, this grade, yes, love it. No, not so much that. And just to really see it in action. So I think it, and it's a lot of energy for our really seasoned, wonderful teachers to get to share their knowledge.
Yeah.
So I'm really excited to see this happening.
I just want, you know, I was ready to add as a. So I would say a couple of things. Um, I think Kathleen's being modest too. Kathleen is an adjunct professor for St. A's um, and has opened up this opportunity for us. And really to have a pipeline for St. A's that really want to come into our schools is such an opportunity for this school district. So you know, it is, it is amazing and, and great educators. And, and when we get the opportunity and need someone, I mean, we are, um, just adding, adding that to the district. So, uh, we're very excited by this opportunity.
Tell them it's a great place to sub while they're working on their masters.
Yes.
Cause we need that too. And the other thing that, um, if I can have two questions.
Sure.
I wanted to hear a little bit about, um, the owl. I know that behavior in general this year has been a challenge. How did the, uh, did the owl assemblies go? Are you seeing any improvements?
I mean, I'll do the kickoff and I'll let Kathleen do the data.
Okay.
Um, so, um, the, it was kind of the reboot. So we came back, you know, in responsive classroom also that kind of reboot, once you come back from the, the holidays. And, uh, we, we found that, um, the students were prepared for that reset. Uh, we had a lot more Hootie shout outs, uh, a lot more of the expectations being hit and some of the behaviors coming down. So Kathleen will kind of talk about if, if we can kind of talk about the, the behaviors because, um, you know, we are seeing, uh, through the efforts and classroom teachers, um, the, the behaviors are coming down.
That's wonderful. I would love.
Kathleen could probably whip up a spreadsheet to show you right now, but.
Yeah, I think the owl expectations assemblies really helped us and just reinforcing them, that common language, all staff, all kids, bringing them back out to the parents. We shared our videos and the presentation and the matrices with matrices with the families too, so they can reinforce at home. Um, what's expected in which area of the school. We're hoping the PTA can help us get some really nice posters with Hootie on them too, to display throughout the school with these expectations as well. Um, our number of referrals definitely dropped from December to January. Um, we meet as a behavior assistant team, the back team, we call ourselves every Friday and we review those referral data. Um, and you know, we have conversations about maybe frequent flyer students or that need additional supports. Um, but definitely we were pleased to see an overall decrease from month to month, from December to January. Um, and we think a large part of that was in relation to re, reinvigorating some of those expectations. Um, Ms. Towne, our school counselor at Wilkins, um, also spent two weeks reinforcing all of those in the in-class guidance lessons. So that was the area of focus there. Um, and then Ms. Lindsay at Clark kicked off the bucket filling challenge to really reinforce the, um, kindness at Clark. Um, so we're feeling like there's been a lot of headway there. Certainly we have our, our students that we're continuing to support and work as a team on, but definitely feeling pretty good about our overall school referrals, um, making a little shift between December and January, but always working on that too.
And Hootie and the principal's council went down to kindergarten and did presentations in all the classrooms. So, um, first they're just so incredible, the fourth graders, but just that the kids looking up in the role models of expectations. So, uh, that was great, uh, to see also.
I, I feel like we're, we're so, you're, you're owls and you are eagles. We need to choose a bird.
Yeah.
The bird needs to be some kind of bird, the falcons. Oh wait, is it falcons over at my burning? I don't know. It seems familiar. So. Oh, okay. Wait. Spurs. I don't know.
I know. I, I'm sure we'll hear about that on Thursday.
All right. Next meeting, we'll have picked a bird. I'm, I'm going to take this on as a project. We, I feel like we are left out here. They thank you because I know that it's, you have to try coming at it from so many different directions, right? And, and I love the through line with the families and really having the same language, having them be able to ask about things, having positive things to ask about and not just, you know, where are you behaving today? You know, have like these happy things. I think that it is, um, such a great sneaky way to get everybody on the same page. And it just makes for a great atmosphere and I'm glad to see that it's getting some results. So, um, good job chipping away at it, man. I know it's been a rough year.
Okay. Um, can I give, I have a quick like shout out and then an actual question. So my quick shout out is the, um, Northeast Passage Program. The, the, that program, I know it's been happening for several years, but finally, you know, having everybody back in the building. I think it, did it get shut down the first year of COVID? Cause it was like right on that.
Yeah. Yeah. I think it was right around there.
Yeah. So, um, it, for those that don't know, they bring in a program, they, they actually bring in the wheelchairs for all the students to be able to play with during PE and they have to learn how to play ball and stuff like that while in their wheelchairs. Um, and it's a huge hit with the students. Uh, Mr. Holt was joking around with me. I happened to see him one of those days. He said, all the kids tell me that it's their favorite PE day of the year. He goes, but it's the only day I don't actually teach. Um, because they, there is somebody that's in there with them teaching. So we, you know, it's more of a partnership. Um, so the kids love it. So I just wanted to, I, I really love that we do that program and it's, it's really valuable in so many different ways. Um, but my question was the ICS team and homeland security assessment. I, I want to walk carefully because that is like a security issue. So not, you know, but were we able to learn things that we can take away and make adjustments within our buildings? Um, and actually create a better program out of it, I guess is.
So I, I would say a couple of things. Uh, a lot of the, uh, suggestions that, um, the two individuals that came would be solved with a new building. So some of the issues and concerns of safety. Uh, you know, there, there's a multi-page, uh, document that they go through. They walk through every, uh, piece of the building. And then they will present a report, um, that will be sometime within the next four to six weeks. Um, and things that it's called our EOP, our emergency operation plan to be able to make adjustments to, to that with some of their suggestions. But. But you know, I'd say any, any large change would, would be addressed with a new building. And then they, i- if the building passes, they, them would also like to reach out just as you're going through it. So some of the suggestions would already be taken in consideration when building.
Any further questions, Victoria?
I just want to follow up on the math program and the pilot. It sounds like we're switching gears to the second curriculum. So my question is, um, when we expect to kind of make our choice and uh, you know, what that process will be.
I'm going to say Christine, because it would be for all of us.
Yeah. So um, each grade level is making that transition um really throughout February. So we really um had a separate scope and sequence for each grade level. So that change will be happening or has happened in some grade levels. We got very um deep feedback and helpful feedback from our first pilot. We um got information both from students as well as teachers. And teachers gave feedback through a survey as well as a focus group. So it was really helpful to hear and for teachers across different grade levels to get together to share feedback and to hear um other grade levels. And but then us to also have that in print as well, those feedback forms. Will be piloting um that the second um program illustrative mathematics this half of the year. And we'll be starting to gather feedback probably around May or so. We don't want to uh gather too early and miss important information from that full half-year pilot. But we also don't want to wait too late because we have to plan professional development and we would want to share our outcomes with the board too. So we're going to try to time that perfectly. All of the information from the pilot will go to our um math committee. We were calling them our descriptive review team because they were the team that really undertook that deep review of our math material, materials to determine um which ones we would be piloting this year. So it's going to go to that committee that can be, will review and make a recommendation to Adam. And then Adam will be bringing our recommendation forward.
I saw the comment about the preschool information night. Uh, is there, has kindergarten registration opened? And if not, when?
So kindergarten registration is looking to um open end of this week, early next week. We've gotten a lot of phone calls, um, and we were today just brainstorming, planning out, um, doing uh kindergarten information night. Probably in the next month or so. And we've been going back and forth because we kind of switched to Zoom when we sort of had to with the pandemic. However, it's also nice for families with young children to be able to join the information night um remotely so that they wouldn't need to worry about childcare. So we're looking at a combo, uh, doing potentially some after-school tours for families to see the building physically um in March. And then doing an information night in the evening. So you can kind of do both, do one, um, and kind of get all the information that way. We also liked being able to record the information nights. And then if you're going to move here over the summer, you're able to access that um as a new family too. So that'll be forthcoming with the portal, hopefully opening end of this week, early next week.
Do you have parents for preschoolers that will tell you ahead of time, they'll register and say, my kid won't be three until December, so that you won't see them until that point? So do you have insight when you have seven new kids to start preschool? Do you know that that's going to happen typically?
Typically, it depends on our referrals from early supports and services. So sometimes we know of students like in the pipeline, we um would hear of them at their, you know, when they're two and a half. But then sometimes there's a new family that moves in um with a child who we had, maybe used a different provider in a different area of the state um that we wouldn't be aware of.
Uh, and my final question in terms of, and it's probably, I, I don't know if it's happening the same at AMS, but lunches, are we still rotating through areas? I, I was under the assumption that we were, under the impression that we were going to be having everybody in the cafeteria and normal lunches.
Yeah, I think that we've kept the different locations, but um to circle back around and um within the next, I think we said week or so, bring everybody back into the cafeteria.
Great.
We still might use the find.
Sure.
Right.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
Um, anybody else? Okay, uh, Bethany, any questions for the middle school level? Terry?
All right, so rock climbing, is this a new field trip? I don't remember seeing this one before, but it could just be my faulty memory.
We weren't able to go last year, but we went the year before. So it's new within the past three years.
Okay.
Um, we've shifted part of the curriculum. They read a book called Peak. And so recognizing that lots of our students, there's words like greplons and, you know, uh, and belay and all this terminology that's new for students. So it's a great opportunity to kind of create an equitable experience for kids to understand this new academic vocabulary. And it has this hidden benefit of, of great team building and great connections um between the classrooms and teachers as well. So uh, it's been, it's gone very, very well.
I, I'm excited to see something that really ties into the, like, I love um the Battle of Shaco because it ties into what they've been studying and lets them kind of experience it firsthand. And this feels the same for me.
Very much.
And the team building and they're really, you know, rooting for each other and pushing their boundaries. And I think that um, I, I like the more active field trips that, that connect more than just, let's look backstage at a, you know, at the baseball field, which is also cool, but I, I like these types of things more. So I'm glad to see more of them happening.
Victoria?
Um, I'd just like to comment on our National Junior Honor Society um amount of kids, 66 eighth graders. And if I did the math right, that's 35% of our eighth grade students.
Yeah.
Getting that, that criteria.
It's terrific. The piece that I really love about um National Junior Honor Society is that it starts with an academic um review of students. And they're invited to apply to be part of this, um, this group. The wonderful thing about that is it, it honors not only the academics, but really the whole child, looking at their leadership, their character, their service, all of those different pillars. And recognizing that, that all of those pieces are essential to really being a leader within our school. Later this spring, we'll also be rolling this out for, and it, it's typically our seventh and eighth graders. So COVID kind of threw us off a little bit. So the seventh grade applications and pieces will be coming out later this spring with the hope to induct our seventh graders in um before the school year ends so that they can hit the ground running um with programs and, and uh community service next fall.
Anyone else?
Can you tell us a little bit more about the Launchpad Olympics that happened last week?
Um, absolutely. So um, right when we came back from um the winter break, Ms. Penny's Launchpad invited me to hear this crazy idea they had. So Launchpad is a mix of sixth, seventh and eighth graders um with their anchoring adults. And the idea being that that group will stay with their anchoring adult through their time in middle school. Fifth grade will come in as we graduate and celebrate our eighth graders coming across the road to South Heagan. So Ms. Penny's Launchpad thought it would be a great idea in celebration of the Winter Olympics that AMS should hold a Winter Olympics. So with the supportive of um Ms. Penny and Ms. Bowler, who are Launchpad buddies, um, they really supported their kids in coming up with events. The students came up with the rules, they came up with um the logistics, figured out how things were run, how many students can be involved. And this was really, really a student-driven event. Um, I think part of what made it so special too is that it was a student-driven event. The, the, um, the core group that developed the idea was cross-grade level. And then the entire building participated on Tuesday. I was, I was bummed I, I missed it. But the, the late start schedule, we worked out, it's a little crazy, but three different possible late start schedules for every late start. Based on what the building needs. And this one, we allowed for a whole school assembly at the end of the day. So all based on kind of character and teamwork and um all students who wanted to participate were able to participate. And it was just a great day. So much positive feedback from teachers, from students. Thank you to PTA for supporting us and putting out the call for volunteers. I believe we had 10 parent volunteers come in and help out. Um, and just those extra, those extra eyes were really helpful. So our events included um a little something for everyone. We had uh volleyball games going on. We had a memory game. We had a academic um excellence, which was a, a cahoot, a team cahoot. We had a um opportunity for students to do skits or little plays. And then we had a snowball toss with added challenges outside. Once your team finished the snowball toss and we hit a snow shoe race obstacle course. So I think a lot of great fun was had by all and got everybody active, a lot of team building, a lot of camaraderie on that day.
Great. Anyone else? So I just had one question, following up the behavior question we had at the, at Clark Wilkins. I know that there were times this year where it was probably as bad as, as we've seen it. And I know that there was some concern, and maybe not some concern, but there was a thought process of working with kids as they came back into the school setting, maybe for the first time in two years. Have we resorted back to a more normal system of maybe monitoring or, or in correcting on this? You know, maybe what we did in 2019 has, I, I don't know how to, I'm trying not to, trying to word this the right way. But are we recognizing now that this is normal again and that, you know, the stuff, it, it, are, are we being stricter? I essentially, I don't, I don't know how to, the carrot and stick thing, it keeps coming into my mind. I don't want to say that, but it might be the easiest way for me to explain it. Have we shifted back to, you know, where they've been in school for four or five months now and it's time to start acting like we've been in school for four or five months?
So I think it's a yes and.
Okay.
I think that if you walk through our halls or outside at recess, you're going to see a tremendous amount of positive energy, great behavior. Students really leading and taking ownership. And I think that um as a school year has progressed, we've really settled back more into our school routines, right? So classroom routines have become more normal, expectations have become more normalized. We're remembering how to work in groups. Um, and I think that would be echoed by the teachers as to what they're seeing in their classrooms. Any kind of discipline or student behavior is always a dynamic process, looking at, because no two, no two students are alike, no two situations are exactly alike. And so really looking at those and um one, looking at root causes and preventative measures. And also looking at the reparations that need to happen and what, what the wraparound services are, including conversations with families. Um, Steve has been involved in a number of conversations with us as well and, and a number of conversations with families and kiddos to really meet the needs of every single um student where they're at.
But as we say, it's definitely progressing from where we were at the beginning.
We're, we're moving in the right direction. I, I'd say that there's always going to be those blips. But if we're, I'm looking at the school-wide data as a, as a whole and looking at how things are progressing, we're seeing fewer students. And we're seeing those, those positive mechanisms really kicking in.
Thank you for inferring what I was trying to imply there. So I, I did not word it very well. So uh, anybody else? All right, with that, I will take a vote to pass the consent agenda as written. All in favor? That is five, no, no votes. So that passes five to nothing. So moving on to our next two agenda items, we'll kind of take care of them together. We, just to follow up to the deliberative, um, I want to thank Victoria for her presentation last week. Uh, it was excellently put together, uh, very thorough. And I know that over the last week or so, she's been working hard with the JFAC committee to make sure that we have additional items for tomorrow night's public forum. So if you'd like, if you want to talk a little bit about tomorrow night and takeaways, what people can expect, 6:30 at Wilken School. But we'll have some added elements to tomorrow night's um presentation that really just advances further along in this process.
Yes. Um, first of all, thank you for all of the questions that have been submitted through the website. It's JFAC, J F A C dot S A U thirty-nine dot org. Submitting questions through there, filters through to the right people to be able to answer your questions. We have a whole team of um, you know, of hired professionals, our architects and our construction company. And so what they are going to do, they'll, they'll be attending our community forum uh tomorrow night as they have for the last several months. Um, and our first order of business will be to talk about staging. So we'll talk about the order of um different parts of buildings that are constructed and how students move around and how we make sure that everyone is safe, including our students, our staff and our construction workers who are there on scene. So DEW will be there to talk about that. We also will be discussing a little bit more about the setup um of the houses that Adam had mentioned. And we'll be having our Clark Wilkins representatives there to be able to talk about that. So that will be great for people who have any questions. Um, and finally, we will be talking about the difference between the kick the can maintenance and the cost of the facility bond. At the deliberative, that wasn't information that we had included in the presentation, but it was information that we had. And so the, the number that I had given was without escalation of construction costs. So the 65.2 million would be if we did those um repairs in kind today. Um, and then another number has been um shown when, we'll go through that tomorrow, which shows a compounding um interest escalation uh through the years. So we're, we're excited. We're not, as, as we're hopeful that most people now have heard of the project. We're not going to go through the entire presentation at that meeting. We'll instead touch upon these three things and then open up for questions. And you know, it's the best time to ask a question is when we have all of the professionals in the room. So we really do ask, the people come out to Wilkins tomorrow at 6:30.
Thank you, Victoria. Anybody have any comments on that? I think uh it is worth recognizing Brian Coogan, I was, uh, Brian Coogan, who's on the JFAC committee, spent a lot of time on his weekend putting together those slides that Victoria reviewed and, and that we all saw as a board. And, and they are impressive in terms of the, the breadth of information that they have in there. And it really highlights what those kick the can costs are. If the school were to not pass or if we were to have to wait even a couple of years to, to get something passed. So um it does, it adds a nice compliment to the actual overall presentation. So we'll look forward to seeing that tomorrow night. Moving beyond that, we'll go to a couple of policy items. Uh, the first one we have to review tonight's just the first reading, so there's no action that we need to take. But policy B D D, which is the Board Superintendent Relationship. Does anybody have, actually before that, Ms. Kuzma, do you have any high-level thoughts that you'd like to share with us on this policy?
No, we reviewed this uh a little bit more in depth at the SAU board meeting, so nothing has changed since then. But if anybody has any additional questions stemming out of that, let me know and I can pull them up. Terry's unmuting.
I am unmuting. You can see me trying to make it work. I did have a question about the policy per se.
Yep.
I do have a, I know that we have, we have received superintendent questions and I wondered if we will be addressing those tonight or waiting till SAU meeting.
Questions, uh, which questions are you referring to?
We've received several letters from the public asking um some superintendent-related questions to us. And I know that you'd been exploring those questions.
Yeah, I mean, we've, at this point, you know, we, we're, I have my notes on this so I can speak in the, the legal sense. Clearly there's, uh, you know, there was an issue last week with South Heagan High School. It doesn't impact our board. Uh, but our board went ahead and, and was able to get information regarding the process that was taken last week. Not so much in regards to the South Heagan disciplinary issue, the South Heagan investigation, but in terms of what our superintendent did. And we've been assured by the Department of Education um that they're conducting an investigation into the overall matter. But we've been assured that our superintendent acted properly um and did everything that was legally required of him leading up to and including um reporting it to the state. So uh, that is pretty much what we can say for now. So as a board, I think it's safe to say that we're, we've done our due diligence on this to make sure that everything was, was followed to a T. We're confident in that. Uh, and I think at this point, we'll, we'll let whatever else happens with the SAU or the South Heagan matter play out. But from our vantage point and what concerns us with our one employee that we have in the district, the superintendent, everything was done properly and maintain, or handled the way that it should have been legally um by the superintendent. So. Yep. Okay, for anything else on BDD, we can go on to our next policy, which is a suspension of a policy, which is, oh, correction. Why does it say suspension? Right in my notes.
Well, because that's the name of the policy.
Oh, there you go. Policy BGF, which covers the suspension of policies. We are going to rescind BGF. Would you like to explain anymore?
So we discussed this at the SAU meeting. However, um, just to refresh everybody's memory, we are rescinding this because we found that this policy kind of creates a loophole. You know, when it comes to voting of, you know, temporarily suspending policies and things like that. So the policy committee took a, took a deep look at this and we realized that it's much better to just rescind the policy and allow other um procedural policies to really hold the weight of this. So we do need a motion um to do this.
So with that, I will take a, a motion to sus, uh, to rescind policy BGF, which covers the suspension of policies. Josh has a motion. Second, Terry, any further discussion? Yep.
Beth, to confirm, my understanding was we do now have the other policies in place because we wanted to wait to make sure that we didn't rescind this before we had other things. Okay, thank you.
Okay, so with that, I will take a vote, all in favor of the uh rescinding of suspense, uh, of policy BGF. All in favor is five and none opposed. So our last item on the agenda tonight is the Clark Wilkins After School Program, an update on that. And I believe, will it be Anna or Kathleen talking about that? Oh, I'm going to go to Steve instead. There we go.
It off and then, so there was an inquiry.
I don't want to put too much on you in your first week of the job.
Terrified, so.
I know.
Definitely not a terrified. So there was an inquiry of, of another vendor who came in and asked about when do we open up and when do you put these out to bid? And ask, how do you engage? And so Christine, Adam and I talked about that piece. And currently, and Christine can speak too, when you open up an after-school program, something like that, that's obviously it's a very difficult time to do it because there's a crisis in after-school care and all that. So there's some uncertainty that would bring. And also whether or not simply are you satisfied with the program? And Christine can talk about the changes that we made in October. But I think we both agree, and I think Adam would agree too, that at this time, our recommendation is not to open it. But Christine, you can speak about the journey this year about after-school.
Yeah, so the board probably remembers back in probably late September, early October, we had a lot of challenges with our current after-school provider. And we were very concerned for student safety. So we cycled out of that program, provided intensive support while that program was still on site until we finished up with that program. We were so lucky to be able to partner with the YMCA and to bring them in for our after-care provider. We've had great success so far this year. I know they were already in place at AMS for the school year, so it was great to, and also Mount Vernon as well, I should say. And we were able to bring them into Clark Wilkins this year. They jumped right in. They were willing to try to hire people, pull a program together for us and support us. They've been a great support during late start, providing us a very reasonable rate for late start, since that's always been a district obligation for late start. And also ensuring that a competitive rate for our families for the after-school care. And Anna and Kathleen have both shared that things have gone extremely well, no major challenges or issues, really, you know, positive feedback in general from the YMCA. We did enter only into a one-year contract with the YMCA for really the use of our facilities. So that contract, we are not paid, we pass the savings on to our families. So that contract is for the use of our facilities and also, you know, negotiating certain aspects of that, that relationship. So we felt that for continuity for families, it was best for us not to accept bids for other after-school programs since this program has really only been in effect since November it started. And, and just with so many transitions and challenges and really, you know, wanting to ensure if we open up to bids, we're not sure of the reputation of some of the other companies. And while that, you know, might come out during that, that bidding process, we certainly, or proposal process, we certainly would, you know, we have an established history with the YMCA. So we felt pretty strongly that it is in our best interest to stay with the YMCA and have them offer, you know, provide a three-year contract to us and what they would be able to offer to our families and us work with them on that. But we certainly wanted to share with the board. I know that there may be other after-care providers interested and possibly partnering with us. We just felt it wasn't really in our family's best interest to be making changes for next school year and that it would probably be in our best interest to continue with the YMCA.
In, in regards to the previous provider that we had, was that a year-over-year contract? Or was it a multi-year contract that we had to break off or that we were in the middle of when we, when we ended it?
I'd have to look. I don't recall off the top of my head. I believe we had a multi-year contract probably at one point, but it's possible we had just renewed that contract. But we had a termination clause, so we were certainly able.
I guess mine is more that this doesn't, this doesn't seem like it's a unnecessary precedent where we're doing something without going out to bid on it. It seems that we had a contract before, we just continued it, you know, with the previous contract. And in a way, you know, we're not, not doing that now. We're not being, there wasn't any laws violated by us not opening up to bid in a, in a full public bidding process.
Not in a, we had an emergency situation, so we felt really comfortable just going straight to the YMCA and offering that. You know, this is a kind of unique situation since, you know, it's, it's a little bit different. When we went out, we did request for proposals for our bus company. There are multiple bus companies in New Hampshire and we did want to make sure that we got the best deal, the best company and that best price. Where, while we want, we want what's best for families in this situation, we're giving them our space. And we're negotiating how they will serve as our students, really, is what that, that contract is about. So we don't feel that it's setting a bad precedent or anything we haven't done in the past with a multi. I believe we had a multi-year contract, but I can double check.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that?
But Terry, go first.
So I guess my question is this, choice is important. It's important for families to have a choice, but I think the building relationships is also, and trust. And we, we learned this year just how important that trust and communication is. And, and let's be honest, they, they kind of saved our bacon a little bit.
They did.
We kind of owe them somewhat, but, but we, but they've continued to build upon that trust. And, and I think that that's a really important thing when it comes to, to safety and the family. So I know it's not quite as, as economically flexible as the previous program was. And that has been a concern for some families is that it's, it's a little more expensive. But we do have other choices still. Yes, they're able to take the bus over to Boys and Girls Club from the buildings. And they're able to have, I don't know if Hampshire Hills is still busing over, but there are, there, there are at least a couple of choices for families because that's, that's my only concern. I think that what's there, you know, at our schools is really important, but it's also important that we're partnering where we can to give our families opportunities to, to have as many choices as possible. So I guess that's my question is do we, do we have enough that we feel like we're giving our families options?
And I did want to speak to Tom's question. We had an agreement with New Morning from the twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school year through the twenty twenty-two, twenty twenty-three school year. So we have a history of multi-year contracts. And I don't know if Kathleen or Anna, if families don't participate in our onsite after-care program, what are there other options? There's Boys and Girls Club, is that really the only one that provides transportation?
Yeah, Boys and Girls provides transportation. Hampshire Hills used to provide transportation, they no longer provide transportation. So we don't have students that go there. Yeah, and the YMCA also offers the families that participate, no matter how many days, a family membership that for the students. Like it's a membership for the student at the Y, which is nice. And they offer care during the February break period at the YMCA site in Westwood.
Yeah, and snow days as well. They provide onsite care at their facility. So if there's a snow day and a family is part of our after-care program, they are able to drop the students, their children off at the YMCA for a snow day for a very small fee.
That was actually leads perfectly into one of my questions. With the remote day that we had recently, a lot of parents were a little frustrated because if it had been a snow day, they would have had care because it wasn't, they didn't. Is that something that we can work with the Y on to see if they might be able to set up a system where our kids are able to go and with laptops and participate in school? And parents have that option to still be able to go to work.
We can certainly work with.
Engage in that conversation.
We're, we're planning on meeting with the director next week, just as a regular check-in, so we can certainly bring it to his attention and ask.
All right, so that is all we have for regular business tonight. I'd open it up for non-public, but seeing none, we will close it for non-public. And I say we do have a non-public that we have to go to, so I will take a motion to go into non-public.
I'll make the motion.
I get a motion from Beth, a second. Terry, I saw your hand first. Roll call vote to go into non-public, Terry? Gothier, yes?
Kuzma, yes.
And we are in non-public at seven oh eight tonight.
We'll close out the Zoom.
Yep.